Okay. Call to order, the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2020. And our first order of business is approval of our minutes from February 26th, 2020. Everybody had a chance to read these? Any changes or things you noticed? All right, motion to approve?
I'm just waiting. I'll make some.
All right.
Second?
All right, all in favor? Aye. All right. Great. All right, next thing we're going to look at here, the following public hearing item, a petition of Virginia Episcopal School for a conditional use permit in an R1 low-density residential district and R3 medium-density residential district for a master plan at 301 VES Road, 310 VES Road, 314 VES Road, 318 VES Road, 320 VES Road, 340 VES Road, 400 VES Road, 500 VES Road, 700 VES Road, 190 Old 160 Lane, 120 Orskine Street, and 3805 Williams Road that includes the addition of new academic buildings, new faculty housing in the form of apartment buildings, duplexes, and single household dwellings, student housing, addition of lighted athletic fields, addition of bleachers and athletic fields, and traffic calming to VES Road. So who will be presenting it?
Members of Planning Commission, the properties are zoned primarily R1 low-density residential. There is some R3 medium-density and R4 high-density in this area here. R3 is here, and then there's a little bit of RC at the north and south along tributaries of streams in the area. This is a master plan for a 15-plus-year build-out for the 165-acre campus of Virginia Episcopal School. The properties on the north side of VES Road are recommended for institutional uses. However, the properties on the south side, where the existing football field and tennis courts are, are recommended for low-density residential. While the school would not be tied to any order of improvements, the submitted narrative does indicate a phasing plan. It's a little hard to see on screen, but I circled what would be the first phase. Years one through five, those are in red, and that would include an academic building in this area and lighting of the existing football field and some tennis courts here south of VES Road. Phase two is what's circled in blue. Those are renovations to existing buildings, the construction of some new faculty housing in this area, as well as lighting athletic fields. I believe that is this area here. And then Phase three, which would be 11 to 15 years, is what's highlighted in pink. That includes the construction of some new academic buildings, a new dorm, recreational facilities, another student dorm, a maintenance building, faculty residences up in this area, as well as lighting the athletic fields, softball field, and the lacrosse field. The submitted master plan is very well-thought and designed. The majority of the proposed uses are internal and within the boundaries of the existing campus. It should have little to no impact on the neighboring properties. The submitted does propose to light the existing athletic fields and facilities, which has been proven to be controversial in this area in the past, as you all know. The narrative does indicate that field lighting would comply with the International Dark Sky Association requirements with zero light trespass to any neighboring public or not VES property. And I am assuming that this is an example of a field that is not done under those guidelines, and this is one that is, and you can see a dramatic difference there. The Planning Division does recommend approval of the master plan with the conditions outlined in your report, which is essentially the lighting would be done in compliance with the International Dark Sky Association and substantial compliance with this master plan, as well as any traffic calming on VES Road needing to be approved by the city engineer and traffic engineer.
Great, thank you. Here is, who's here to speak on behalf of this petition? Great, if you could please come up, state your name, sign your name on the paper there, and tell us a little bit more about what you'll be doing.
I'm currently a headmaster of Virginia Episcopal School and appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak on behalf of this campus master plan. As I have learned in this few lessons along the way, here is trust the process, and I just have to say how much we've appreciated Tom and his team guiding us to this phase. When we built, did some renovations previously, we were expected to do a conditional use permit for the specific project and went through that process successfully. And here, seeking Tom's guidance, Tom and the team's guidance on, as we had completed a master plan as part of our strategic planning process with a 20-year vision, we didn't know if we were going to be in the business of seeking institutional zoning or a conditional use permit for the first project identified in this plan. That's the academic building. So that's, their guidance was introduce the 15-plus-year concept for approval and address any questions and concerns that the city and the technical review might present and be prepared to develop those into our forward vision. All of this is dependent on our ability to raise money for each project. So asking us for a very specific timeline was, it's somewhat idealistic, but necessary for following the process of identifying where our priorities would fall. We know the board has approved our moving ahead with active fundraising and architectural designs for a new academic building that's located just south of the baseball field. And this is to, again, advance our core mission of academic delivery with updated space, more capacity for teaching and learning into today's 21st learning, 21st century teaching styles. Both the strategic plan and the master plan assume that we keep our student population at roughly 260 students, that we're at capacity in our dorms currently and in our chapel, where we meet twice a week, and in our dining facility, where we serve all of our meals. We're currently at a ratio of 70% boarding, 30% day students. So the addition of beds in this master plan concept would assume our ability to migrate to an 80% boarding model within the 260-student program, grades nine through 12. But we love the mix of the boarding day and the Lynchburg community being, and the parents and students being an active part of our community. So we're hoping some of those new boarders would be Lynchburg kids, and we probably have about 10 current Lynchburg kids who've chosen to board. So I just wanted to give the context of a multi-year vision, dependent on successful fundraising over the course, the actions. A disruption to the intended timeline would be because a donor steps forward earlier than expected and identifies a particular project of their interest. But the key priorities the board has identified immediately include the academic building, faculty housing. We put the field lighting there, this program becomes essential to our program, essentially to be able to run practices and games beyond the evening hours, which we're long overdue in investing in that. Kevin Swenson with Glavian Homes is here with me. They've been working with us since 2015 on designing the master plan and are working on the specifics of academic building. Anything to add?
Yeah, I'd just add that the, you know, just to commend VES on their investment in the master plan process. And so we took at least a year, maybe even a little bit longer to go through that process, made sure that we did a fair amount of information gathering and hearing from multiple voices from, you know, faculty, alumni, students, the board. And so really went through a pretty rigorous process to vet kind of the vision for the school, understand what their needs are to be competitive over the next 20 years and things that we could improve for them through the master plan and identify steps forward to be able to achieve that. And some of those that are outlined in here, there are some of the first initiatives are that academic building, which was a priority through the master plan to improve academic space, to get some of the classrooms out of the historic buildings on campus that aren't necessarily suited for academic use anymore, and also improving the faculty housing situation on campus as well. And then focusing on renovating and preserving some of those historic properties that they have on campus. And so those were three of the initiatives that came out of the master plan that we've been working with them to implement over this first phase and into the second phase, I think.
We did invite our neighbors to a campus meeting last week, and we succeeded in getting about a dozen to attend, maybe because we offered cookies. Although that, I don't think that was on the invitation, but they did enjoy the cookies. Asked for open feedback and expression of any concerns. There were questions about the lighting strategy, and we were able to share the vision of how we would execute that. I would say at the end of the meeting that their concerns were resolved. Everybody seemed to leave the meeting comfortable with what was proposed. Their other concern was about construction traffic because they had read the paper, you know, $80 million concept, 20 years, are we going to be in this constant building zone? And, you know, Kevin, you could address that more, but we felt, we reminded them that this was a vision, not necessarily a plan that, and we, most of these projects, the academic building is the one, you know, big new construction. Most of it is renovating of existing spaces that don't require as much material, earth movement, and things like that. And we have succeeded in getting through the last development phase without expression of concern about construction traffic for our neighbors, but.
Great, thanks. Well, we will probably be calling you back up. We're going to open up the floor to public who might speak in opposition or in support. And for those of you who are going to come up and speak, please remember you have a three-minute time limit. So anybody want to come up and speak in support of this petition? Any supporters? Anybody want to speak in opposition to this petition? All right, it's pretty quiet. So don't see anybody in support or opposing. So with that, I believe we'll close the public hearing, and I believe we'll have more questions. So you all might want to come back up. I was expecting someone to come forward, so.
Just, I don't have any questions, but just in the interest of full disclosure, I graduated from VES, as did my two adult children. I served on the board for the school. It's been several years since I have been on the board, and we had very early on started the planning process, but I have not been involved for several years with any of this. But I've never gotten compensation from VES, and I don't have a business relationship. So I feel comfortable that I don't have a conflict of interest under the statute. But just in the interest of full disclosure, it's obviously a subject of interest to me, but I think I can be impartial about the petition.
I have a similar disclosure. I have done work for VES. I haven't done anything for the last three or four years, though, and don't have any business relationship with them at the moment, don't have anything I'm expecting.
Well, I had a question about the traffic calming measures, which is kind of hard for me to see. How far, and I think one of the neat things about VES is my kids who don't go to school there have been able to utilize facilities or play games there, you know, at VES, and they've been very good in letting other groups use facilities. And the R2 fields there, I know there's a lot of walking in between the parking lot and those. Is there traffic calming extending through those?
So let me express first what we asked for. Kevin can talk about what they designed. Just as you note, we have talked to the city in the past about how do we ease the traffic pressure for pedestrians going across, and we've talked about various strategies for crosswalks, et cetera, but nobody, you know, we have difficulty getting everybody to obey the lines. So they introduced the idea of traffic calming, which absolutely could extend. Strategy includes moving our entrance gate to cross VES Road. Since we own the property on both sides, the concept would be much more physically noticeable that you're in campus, and then a median, tree line median on VES Road. I think, again, those are, the safety of our community is a significant priority. This would require a very significant investment that may not impact the immediate student experience, as an example of a new academic building. So there's that challenge of want and need, and then funding for it. What did I miss?
I mean, that covers a lot of the overview. One of the things that came out of the master plan pretty early on was just the importance of safety of students crossing because of the number of fields that are over there throughout the day. There's a significant amount of traffic of students going back and forth and trying to work into the pedestrian circulation paths on campus to identify key locations where that crossing could happen that would be safer. The median, we thought, would be a great way to help provide a location halfway across the street. If there are cars coming, you don't have to get all the way across the entire street. We think it'll help slow down traffic. There obviously will need to be another round of kind of reviews, and it would be a partnership between VES and the city to do this project. So the design hasn't been fully vetted, but there are a number of options with what we're highlighting at those crosswalks, or at least changing the material to maybe a brick or some kind of material that would help slow traffic. There's been the concept of a speed table, but we know that that's also an issue with snow removal. And so there's pros and cons of a number of different options that we could implement as the design of this moves forward and can work with the city in understanding what their, you know, concerns will be and how to achieve kind of both.
I think if we felt we had the blessing to move forward with speed table strategy, that would be the most cost-effective that we would invest in quickly. But because, you know, whether it's emergency vehicles or snow removal, our feedback was that might be a more difficult strategy to get to implement.
I had a question just about the overall process. I've been trying to figure out who does master plans. This is, I think, the first one I've seen. Who's required to do a master plan?
Well, if we go back to the reason for institutional zoning, it was because a lot of institutions thought that anything beyond five years was purely speculative for them, and they didn't want to have to put the time or effort into doing a long-term visioning process like this. I think VES has been exceptional in thinking long-term for the future of that campus, and they were able to put that out there. The reason for the master plan is, you know, they've showed us their 20-year vision, they come in with a project, they go straight to the site plan review stage. They don't have to come back to you each individual time. We did discuss with them the institutional zoning, which would have, not have required anywhere as in-depth of detail as they've provided to you. However, that has also proved controversial in this area. We gave them the two options, and they chose to go this route. So you haven't been seeing as many of these master plans come before you. Quite frankly, one, Liberty University got the institutional zoning, as well as Westminster, Canterbury, and I think the majority of the other larger institutions have had theirs approved in the past and aren't just, just haven't got to the level of exceeding that yet.
So if they were to be 100% institutionally zoned, they would not need a master plan?
The only thing that the institutional zoning requires is a five-year concept.
Okay. I mean, I love the master plan. Having seen this now, I wish we were seeing more of those with some of these other entities that have come before us periodically with specific requests every few years. It would be nice to see the vision, the long-term vision.
Yeah, this is definitely one of the better, if not the best, that we've seen for a very long time. There's been a lot of time and effort put into this, and VES should be commended for that.
I don't know if anybody else is going to make any comments or questions, but, you know, I'd just say that unlike the last conditional use permit that had occurred before this commission in this neighborhood, in which I think we all got a lot of personal touches from people involved, I haven't heard anything in opposition at all. And several of the people who are very concerned and vocal about those issues are quite candidly good friends of mine. So, and I've been with them on several occasions in the last month or so. So if there was anything I think that was an issue with the neighbors, I think I would have, at least I would have heard about it. I don't know if anybody else has or not, but it sort of confirms what Mr. Battle said, which is that, you know, they met with the neighbors and everybody seemed to be happy with it. But it speaks volumes for what the school's done, that our phones haven't been ringing off, our emails haven't been going nuts.
And I think, as you can see, we're just about making a better school, a school a better school. It's within our boundaries of our mission, our strategy, significant enhancements to our capacity to deliver our value proposition to the family. So we were aware of the neighborhood controversies. That's why we frankly went ahead and identified all the fields that we could potentially light, knowing that we couldn't afford to do that now anyway. But we wanted everybody to see what it could potentially be over, you know, a decade of development.
And I think the key is that the enrollment's not changing. So you're not really looking at, you know, more traffic and going, maybe increasing your enrollment to having less, yeah, for more borders, would even be less traffic.
More boarding, more faculty housing on campus, again, more containing the traffic in our, create a walking community.
Ironically, the enrollment at 260 is actually less than what it was at its peak. I think it was, what, 320 at the peak, or 310?
No, no.
Never got over 300?
No.
Okay.
265.
Okay, I stand corrected then. I thought it had gotten higher at one point.
Physically, we cannot fit any more bodies in our community spaces.
The one thing that I would note is that the future land use map shows, as you say, everything north of VES Road being institutional and south being zone residential, maybe, I don't know what, R1 or whatever, but that, which is a good thing because, in my opinion, everything south of VES Road, whatever fields you light there are going to have very little impact on anybody. I mean, there's nobody living over there that's not part of the campus to be impacted by lighting those fields. The ones, the softball or baseball field up in the north end and fields over there may be closer to people's homes, but it looks like they're surrounded by trees anyway.
It's far back.
Yeah.
And then we intentionally did not, we would never plan to light that practice field that's right on Williams Road and right across the street.
From Westminster?
No.
And so, and the fact that it's the kind of lighting that you really can't see from anywhere unless you're standing under the light, you don't see the lights. So I think people have gotten used to those now and know that, you know, they're not going to be impacted by those. So I don't see any problem with the lighting, but it's a great plan. Sorry, you're not going to be around to see it.
No.
Forever, huh?
I've got a child, one more to come through.
Do you have any more comments you want to add?
No, I love it.
I have a question. I'm not opposed or against it, but I do have a question.
We'll take a question.
I'm a property owner, and my property joins the VES property, where they're looking at building faculty housing down on VES Road. And I've looked at building some additional rental units and stuff down there, and I'm having problems with sewer and water. And I wonder what the situation will be with this plan as relates to sewer and water going down VES Road.
So we haven't investigated those sites fully to?
There's a two-inch water line, which is not enough to support apartments, and the sewer line, I think, needs to be run up VES Road.
Yeah, one thought about even a couple of those houses up there may need to just be on septic and well, potentially.
I don't know, the Planning Commission or something, Tom can have.
It seems to note that if there's, any final site plan approval would require addressing the stormwater issue. So, you know, I think that would probably be something that would come up when the site plan was put in there for a specific project. Is that right, Tom?
Yes, water and sewer availability would be a final site plan item. You know, the gentleman, if he'd like to come in and talk with us about his proposal, we can look at that and see what it would take to get water and sewer to the site. I'm not sure if you've done that or not, or is that you?
I think that, yeah, great resource.
But we can definitely talk with you about it, what the ordinance requires, and get you in touch with the water resources people, for sure.
Anybody else have any, want to make a motion?
Make a motion to recommend approval of the plan as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, nothing else you need to say, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Great. Approved, and good luck at city council and looking forward to seeing those changes.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that to us.
Appreciate the discussion.
All right, our next order of business is a public hearing on the petition of TPB Enterprises for a conditional use permit in a B3C community business conditional district to allow the construction of a car wash at 7816 Timberlake Road. Tom, are you doing that?
Well, Steve wants to do it. The, do you want to do it? Okay. You're capable. The petition proposes the construction of a standalone car wash on property that's zoned B3 community business district conditional. The property is recommended for high-density residential uses on the future land use map. However, the existing B3 community business district was established on, actually back in March 2020.
in March 12th, 2014, as part of a larger development proposal for this area, which included apartments to the south. This proposed development is directly adjacent to the site that was zoned B5 conditional and was indicated to be a car wash as part of a rezoning that was approved on December 11th of 2018. It's the understanding of staff that the petitioner will propose a tire store on this location in the future. When the development was originally proposed, the commercial uses fronting Timberlake Road were to support the apartment units to the south. While this development has changed ownership and the uses proposed for the commercial area, they've really morphed into your typical auto-oriented uses that will do little to support the residential uses behind. So I think it's important to understand that the concept has moved away from what was originally rezoned. That being said, this car wash was previously approved by council back in 2018. It's actually a well-designed building. It should fit well with the other uses. And, you know, our recommending of approval for this conditional use permit doesn't necessarily we would support a car wash in the future. So we do recommend approval, I'm sorry, a tire store in the future. So we do recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Great, thanks, Tom. Who's here to present this? You all know the, the drill here, so.
My name is Norm Walton. This is Daniel Cyrus. I'm with Perkins and Orson. He's with Thomas Builders of Virginia. And just to give you a little background on the, on the project, we are here obviously for CUP, for tunnel car wash on this site. As far as the technicalities of the site, water and sewer is available at the site. That infrastructure is being put in now. I'm sure you've gone down Timberlake Road and seen the construction going on. The traffic in this area and the design of the signal at Candlewood Court is adequate for this design. If you remember, I think some of you were on planning commission when this came through with Ed Tam early on. There was a grocery store and some other commercials, and it has now been removed from that site. So we feel like that, that intersection will have less traffic than what was, was being proposed at this current time. We do have a triple-lane kiosk at, at the very rear of the property, kind of the south of the property, or triple-lane to the pay kiosks to hopefully reduce the, the stacking and queuing of cars off of the site. This layout is in conjunction with the car wash manufacturer. The only exit and entrance to the parcel is at the far rear of the parcel away from Timberlake Road to hopefully not impact traffic flow of traffic coming onto or off of Timberlake and back up onto the private road there. The landscape that we have shown in this plan is intended to demonstrate the buffering and screening that's required by code. We want to be clear, there are no proffers offered with this specific CUP, but the underlying proffers for the entire development are, are not being revised, amended, or removed by this CUP. So we understand that this still needs to adhere to those underlying proffers.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Dean Cyrus, I present TPB Enterprises, the developer of the Midtown project on Timberlake Road. I'd like to just speak a little bit about the project and the CUP that we're requesting to give some more background information. The intent of the car wash is to construct 120-foot automated tunnel car wash, you know, with 14 associated vacuum spaces, as you see in the site plan. The intent is for the building architecturally to correlate and match with the remainder of the commercial development and the high-density residential development in the rear. As you all are aware, you know, we've provided renderings, which it is our intention to closely match those renderings to create a building that's attractive along Timberlake Road. Our intent in relocating the car wash from the original parcel is to kind of group all of the similar pairings of businesses in the commercial division. As you see, the current car wash parcel, the parcel located to the right on the plan is a nationally branded gasoline store. And the parcel located to the right ultimately will be proposed as a nationally branded quick-change oil location. So that's similar to the new oil change on Old Forest Road. And so, you know, the intent is to group those similar uses together. We feel that the apartments that are located both in the rear in our development, as well as the existing apartments in the area, support this use for the car wash as well as the adjoining And, yep, so we appreciate your time.
Do you have any questions for us before we sit down?
Well, you know, we'd usually call and see if there are people who want to speak in support of opposition, but I don't think there's anybody here to do that. So you might as well stay.
You mentioned in the report and when you gave your presentation, it was originally proposed to include grocery stores, retail, and office-type uses, and it's morphed into maybe things that aren't as attractive. So could?
I'm not saying that they're not that attractive. I'm saying that they're going to do little to support the, I believe it's 400-some units.
Which is part of what was the goal of the original project.
Right.
So, could that have been, looking ahead, how do we stop this from happening again?
Stop remending proffers and stop approving conditional use permits like this.
Okay. I mean, I was part of the original petition back in 2014, and I was adamantly opposed to it, even given what it was originally supposed to be. And I just don't see tire stores, oil changes, car washes adding anything to this area. And I speak with that regard as a member of the public as much as a member of the planning commission. And it bothers me that the, the original purpose and the intent, even though we are dealing with different owners, is not what was originally envisioned. And so, I mean, in my mind, I think we need to be more specific in allowed uses when we look at future petitions for projects of this scale, so that what we're envisioning remains that way, which doesn't affect what's happening here. But I guess I'm just bothered by the fact that, that, I mean, Timberlake is just becoming less and less attractive and functional over time.
May we make some clarification to the other uses in the commercial area of the subdivision, or of the division, of the development? You know, as Mr. Martin pointed out, the car wash was originally shown on the rezoning and in the proffers, and we're simply relocating it to the adjoining parcel. One clarification, and, you know, this may be viewed as a technicality, but I do think that from you all's perspective, as far as attractiveness to the members of the public, it's been noted several times, a tire store located on the adjacent parcel, and that is not the intent for there to be a tire store. The intent is for nationally branded oil change location. And quite frankly, a lot of those buildings are very attractive. There's existing proffers in place for the development that we are not requesting to amend that are in conjunction with the architectural elements of the development. And those were voluntary proffers that were put in place in order to try to create a cohesive look for the entire development. And so for the remainder of the development, as I mentioned, four, there's a national gas station, there's also a national fast-food retailer, and then there are also two buildings that are proposed as multi-use strip mall-type buildings. And then located in the rear off of Timberlake Road frontage, there is a multi-story conditional, conditioned storage facility. And so, and again, all of those were in the original site plan. The only thing that was not in the original site plan was the oil change location. But all of the other businesses are essentially the same. They are more defined now, now that we have more information in the development. But again, you know, our intent in, in actually asking to relocate this car wash was to allow for the beautification of both the development and for Timberlake Road. And that, that was the reason why we applied for the CUP permit.
Tom, can I get this image on the overhead? Can you? No, on my screen. Can you use the camera to broadcast?
Sure. I think the, the thing that's, and maybe this is what you're saying, the disappointing thing is, the, the goal is to try to have things that support the community, like that's being built behind it. And, and that's, I think, what was initially seen. I wasn't on the planning commission then, but it was something like a grocery store was seen, and we've seen other areas that have been built up, and then they say, well, this is going to support the community, but we end up creating areas that people have to drive then to another place. Yeah, there is a Kroger across the street, but I think, is that kind of more what you're thinking? This is ideas around businesses that support the people living there. And I did think, you know, that there, it's like, why aren't these communities, why aren't we tying our communities together, you know, this complex along with things back on Greenview? Because there's a, you know, they're pretty close, you know, but that connectivity is really nice. Of course, it doesn't really help the further the grocery store gets away, the less people want to walk, and we continue to have traffic problems because people have to drive eight blocks to go somewhere instead of walk.
Sure. And I mean, as far as interconductivity of developments, you know, I mean, we even originally approached property owners in the adjoining Cornerstone community to make a connection into their community. And, you know, I mean, they, they were opposed to it because they were concerned about traffic coming through their community. To your point, though, you know, this would allow them access to another signalized intersection. But I mean, you know, our, again, I respect your opinion as far as whether or not this supports the surrounding communities, but one thing I would say, you know, we've worked closely with a national company that develops car washes. And, you know, they've looked at the market and the market area within, you know, one-mile radius of this site, and, you know, they've determined that the existing market supports a car wash of this type. You know, obviously, it stands to reason, I would think, that, you know, as you have more high-density residential communities and people don't have the availability to wash their car in their own driveway, like they do in a single-family residence, that they need access to car washes.
Well, they're getting them. Because there is another one going up, and there's another existing one, all within half a mile.
Yep. And we've, we've looked at all of those, and, and we've had, you know.
I think they were approved at so, close to the same time, the Lightning McQueen one and, and the last rendition of this.
So this is where we are on, on the commercial concept plan. This is the parcel that was previously the car wash with the fast oil change. This is the new layout for the new car wash. This is the sheets that has been submitted and conditionally approved, correct, Tom?
It's getting there.
Okay. This is a conditioned space site. This building is a conditioned space storage facility with associated project parking. This site has been submitted and is under review. These are retail spaces. We are working on that site plan, which should be submitted next Tuesday. This is a national fast-food retail establishment, which we can't say the name of. And we are anticipating that site plan to be submitted in the next month or two.
In the near future.
And this site plan was originally on the concept plan as a bank. We're not sure if it's going to be a bank, but it will be some commercial facility. So, you know, we, we do believe that we're keeping in the nature of the original concept Grocery store parcel was on an adjacent property. The developer did not have an option on that contract. It was not transferred, obviously, if it was an option. It wasn't transferred to this owner. The current developer, Mr. Bell, tried to make reasonable arrangements for the purchase and use of that property, which failed. So that's the reason that was taken off.
I don't think I'd want to be a grocery store across the street from Kroger anyway, but.
What was originally proposed was an Aldi's, which was, is a different niche.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so that, that could have worked, but, you know, with the, you know, with the, with the failure to negotiate a purchase of the property or some type of land lease on the property, it just, it, it never developed into a viable project.
But if we look through the history of this, it still might. You never know what might happen. Because it has, it has changed quite a bit since, since the original.
That's correct.
Blue Woods or whoever had it before.
And, and you say that's a sheets that's going in, so that's a convenience store.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So that site has, has been all but approved. I think there are, there are no outstanding items on the site plan that may be some developer-related issues, Tom?
Correct.
To, to get that approved.
Well, I think that those two.
Anchors, I mean, you've got a fast food and a sheets, and it's not the healthiest thing in the world, but certainly gives kids who live in that new development something to walk up the street and go spend their money on, so. Go get some milk or whatever without crossing Timberlake Road.
And to add to that, you know, as part of our development, we're putting pedestrian crosswalks in across Timberlake Road for connectivity to the existing apartment complex behind Wendy's. So, I mean, there is some additional pedestrian conductivity generated from that.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the plan as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Four to one, eyes carried. Thank you for bringing that to us and see some good things come out of that.
Thank you. Indeed, thank you for your time.
Have a good day.
Thank you for accommodating me with the cameras, Tom.
All right. Well, do we have any other new or old business that we have not dealt with? Or is there somebody wanting to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.